Are we ready?
Go in live.
I was waiting for somebody to do that.
Good evening. I would like to call the order, the April 14th ACSD Board Meeting. The current time is 6:30. And as our usual practice, let's go around and do interjections. Jason, if you could start.
Susan Chan.
Ellen Wieland Weis.
Jamie McCullough.
Tricia Allen.
Jess Venable Knopf.
Steve Cash.
Steve Orzek.
Alvin Glickman.
Ron MacCliff.
Mary Heather Noble.
Wendy Baker.
Barbara Wilson.
Suzanne Buck.
And is there anyone on Zoom? Is Ellie there?
Or Laura.
Or Laura Allen.
No.
Someone is walking in the door.
And someone is walking in the door.
It's Cardi.
Okay. Next, I would like a motion to adopt the agenda. Okay, Jess?
I'll second.
And any modifications?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include an executive session to address an important student matter per one VSA 313A7. And right, like before public comment period, please.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Oh, so for the second public comment?
Excuse me, before because the other executive session is already after the second comment period.
Yes.
Correct, before, like right after we modify this agenda.
Oh, you mean the first public comment.
Correct.
Yes. And did I have a second? I'm sorry.
I did.
Thank you. Any discussion? Jason?
We're going to have two executive sessions, one now and then.
Yes, we are. Yes.
Correct.
Yes, this is something new that... Thank you.
A new development. Yeah, and I guess I should have forwarded that appropriate, per one VSA 313A7. And with agreement that the information would... The board would be at a disadvantage if we didn't discuss.
And it's exempt student information. So any other modifications to the agenda? All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So now we are at our first executive session to per one... I'm just going to say where we are in the agenda, and then I'll ask for a motion. Per one VSA 313A7 for an important student matter. So can I have a motion?
I'll move that we move into executive session for the purpose of discussing a student, an immediate student issue per one VSA 3A7.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And what we're going to do in this particular case is we're going to move into that room that's just off the library. Yes, behind Jason, and then we will be back shortly.
Okay. Very high... I know. You're good to...
Like, taking that away with the policies. Um, and I don't know if people understand how much we value our teachers and how much we want to continue learning from them. And for those of you who work with administration, who work on those policies and who's going to be teaching who next year, or who can get that message to whoever's deciding that, I really urge you to reconsider these decisions and focus on the impact it's going to have on us as students, because it's real. Just to name a few, um, Metteb Steel, the French teacher, is retiring, so Senor Costin is moving fully to teaching French. Um, and that means that we're losing her as a teacher. She has really, like, for me personally, I never really loved Spanish, and I'm loving Spanish this year with her. Mr. Cron is an amazing English teacher, and I would, it's everyone. And I heard from multiple students who are not necessarily always the most rigorous um, in the course load that they take, that they're not going to want to take year two classes of Spanish, English, global politics, because we're going to be losing those teachers that make that class important for us. So it genuinely is going to have an impact on students if they choose to stop taking a course, because they don't share that same passion anymore, because that connection is lost. Um, so that is one thing that's definitely very prominent right now. And I guess, before I move on, if anyone has any questions or anything they'd like to say about that, otherwise I can move on to talk about phones.
Now, do I have students talked with, um, Miss Steel about this?
We are in the process of reaching out to her and, and trying to get a meeting, because obviously administration is not out to get us. They care about us and want the same. And I understand, I just, I truly think that there is a communication, maybe like difference there, where just that understanding isn't met. But I want to bring this to everyone's attention.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to talk about phones, cell phones? Okay. So, um, there's been a student group, student parent, um, and administration groups working together, um, right now to try to determine a cellphone policy for next year. Currently, we do have a cellphone policy. It's not very strictly followed, so it's very inconsistent. That's one of the problems. Um, and there have already been three conversations in the zero hour period with Miss Steel, and, um, I think some other teachers might have been there, but basically Miss Steel. Um, and then parents who are concerned about their kids, and then more recently, students have joined, because we've realized that this is going to impact us next year. And so that's part of, we should be part of that conversation. And so, right now, what's happening is we're reviewing the rules. Um, two years ago, there was some issues, and for this year, this school year, the administration sort of revised, but very, very small, like, it's basically the same rules. And so we're really trying to focus on, like, what will happen next year and how will that work? I talked to Miss Steel today about what's happening. And, um, you know, I'll keep updating you guys, because nothing's set yet, but it's expected to be a little more strict with cellphones, but now that students are here, there's real problems, just to name a few, like contacting our parents, you know? What do you do during free blocks, sort of things? There's a lot of organization that goes into it. Um, people who want to listen to music, that sort of thing, people on plans, anyway. So, yes, and also, there's some state-proposed legislation, but even if that doesn't go through, there's probably still going to be cellphone stuff happening here. And then, the last thing, I guess, is just, also with people from my grade, a lot of the feedback, especially with all that's happening right now in the government and all these changes, um, within schools that are happening really fast, I think it'd be good for us to have a way to communicate what happens in board meetings, almost like how you send out to teachers, the, um, I wrote it down, oh, your spotlight letter, if we could almost take that, and, and I can do this, I can write it up, and we can have it be in the newsletter, might be a way for students to understand what is happening in the board, because I think there's this, like, kind of disconnect of, like, what's happening here actually impacts them, but we're not realizing it, because not everyone is that in tune, but it should still be available to everyone. So, sorry, I talked a lot, but that's what I have.
No, thank you so much. Any questions?
Just a clarification, Nova, it's, it's, it's really public, so if you'd like to take the content in that and share that with students, then you're, we're more than welcome to do that.
Really great idea. Jay, um, Jamie, sorry.
Thank you, that was really helpful. What is the cellphone policy?
Right now, she shared it with me just today, I can pull it up. Um, okay, so, right now, the policy, yes, we are 2024, 2025, okay, I'll read it to you. All phones and personal electronic devices, including headphones, must be stored out of sight during class. Class includes advisory, study hall, learning lab, and academic support. From my own experience, some teachers definitely follow this through. I have teachers who ask us to put away headphones in study halls, in advisory, and in certain classes. Some teachers are like, I, I don't feel like it should be my job to enforce that, um, which I think might be valid, and also, you know, there's an argument to be said about advisories in study halls. And then the next one is, teachers will take students' phones slash personal electronic devices, if they're being used when they shouldn't be, and then they will return them at the end of class, um, which I can say, I think does happen when that is a rule in classrooms. And then, there's other stuff, just about like, families are encouraged not to contact their students, and if you have an educational plan, sometimes you can have your phone. So, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
Any other questions? Yes, Laura?
I just point out that there's usually medical exceptions to that as well, just as a...
Thank you so much. Um, next up is reported as superintendent.
So, the first item has to do with personnel appointments and resignations. Um, fairly long, uh, here, which, um, shows you how busy, uh, teams have been in, in pulling in folks that are associated with our FY '26 budgets. You know, on here, um, you will see, um, recommended, uh, appointments for the student response coordinator. Um, uh, Jackson Gosha, who's the school counselor, actually came to us, he's continuing with us, but he's somebody who, um, was on a non-renewable contract, because he was hired after June 15th, and so comes up again and has to be go through the hiring process. So, you'll see that with a number of folks here. Um, we are seemingly able to staff our school counselor openings, which is wonderful, and, and not where we were last year. It seemed very difficult to find, uh, school counselors to staff that, but that feels very different this year. Um, we are, I'm just trying to think, um, you will see Sonia Olafeline, who is our Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practices, um, she'll be joining us. She, um, will be coming from Illinois, and, um, we look forward to her district experience with this content, as well as, um, our student success roles that relate to that. So, look forward to having you meet her. Any questions on anyone that's listed here?
Yes, Tricia.
Uh, just curious, I know you've talked about the new community assistant position that's coming here, and I noticed someone else is being hired on, so I'm, I'm curious about, oh, can you tell us more about this particular?
So, um, so the community assistant is something that, um, we're trying at Mary Hogan, in part because there are a number of para-educator vacancies that we, that we can't fill, and so, so, um, because teachers need to have, um, a certain number of uninterrupted minutes for prep periods and so on and so forth, um, we need to have people who are able to cover lunch and recess and things of that nature. And so, we're trying a community assistant approach, um, for folks who want to just come in for a small part of the day to, to help with that, um, in that sense. And, um, and this is our second person who's come forward to do that. And so, so by the end of the year, we'll have a sense as to whether that feels like a viable, um, let's someone who, who have just a few hours in a day come and do something of that nature, which, um, so far, people seem to be enjoying.
Any other questions? Steve?
Um, are there any implications to, uh, hiring someone who is Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practices, given what's happening at the federal level?
There are not. Um, yeah, shortly, um, if, if it hasn't come out in the last couple of hours, you'll see Secretary Saunders' letter to the U.S. Department of Education that explicitly states Vermont's continued commitment to diversity, inclusion, and equity initiatives, um, and explicitly exempts any position named as such in any way, shape, or form that is, um, related to the work of ensuring that we're educating students equitably as, um, as not related at all to the, um, legal underpinnings of Title VI, the Civil Rights Law, which, which we follow, you know, to a T. So, so you will actually see a clearer stance on that by the secretary. Um, like I said, if it, if it isn't already out, um, it'll, it'll be in tomorrow's news, and so I'll forward that to the board.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Can I have a motion? And it's all on the list, so, I don't know.
I can do it, if you want me to.
Sure, thank you.
I move that we accept the personnel appointments and resignations as such. Michael Dudek, 1.0 FTE. Jackson Gosha, 1.0. Erin Jipner, 1.0. Louise...
Lubasiuski.
1.0 Andrea Lucci. 1.0 Kendall McAllister, 0.29. Sarah Nato, 1.0. Sonia Olafeline? Is that how you said that? Sorry. Um, 1.0 Julie Pettis. 1.0 Rodrigo Placencia. 1.0 Ingrid Rizzo. 1.0 Jorky Sears. 1.0, and accept the resignation of Brian Buto, um, who is a 1.0 FTE. Accept the resignation of Carissa Pelletier, another 1.0 FTE. Accept the resignation of Christopher Perkins, and final resignation of Molly Roach.
Second. Okay. Second, thank you, Jason. Okay, all, any additional questions before we do the vote? And I'm not going to repeat the whole list. Um, all those in favor of accepting the appointments and the resignations, as Suzanne so nicely stated for us, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, Steve and Laura.
So, the second item is, is really, um, just to give an, an opportunity for, um, voicing considerations for the, just a feasibility analysis of, of where we're going with Ripton Elementary School. We spoke about that last week, um, and, uh, and it's a placeholder here. I've done a little bit of thinking about it, uh, and I just wanted to, to provide the opportunity for us to just have a moment, if, if there are folks who have considerations around that. One of the choices that, that districts sometimes make in this circumstance is to, is to have, um, an independent reviewer, just kind of take a look at the options, meet with folks in the town, um, you know, um, think about the educational, um, pieces, and, and begin to, to put some things together. That's one approach. Often, if that's the case, it's somebody who, um, is able to, um, speak the educational language and understand that, but also has some connections to community planning, um, to determine sort of, you know, where things are. So, this is really just an opportunity to voice thinking around that, as, as soon, you know, I'll need to begin to put this work in place. Steve?
Um, I, I know that, uh, when they did this with Addison School, that was a pull-out program for a lot of students that were on, uh, special education, IEPs, and things like that, and, um, they almost ran afoul of the law, because, uh, special education is his least restrictive environment, and there were no other students. So, there was no general population, and when you pull them out and put them in a separate building, um, that's, it's, it's in danger of running afoul of that law, so I'm just bringing that to light, because I know that happened in Addison, when they did it for Addison Schools, so...
Other thoughts? Ron?
Dr. Beck, you, you mentioned that an independent reviewer is, is one of the options. Um, I wonder if there's other things that you're considering, or, you know, other ways of including the Ripton community in, in the conversation about, about that?
So, um, either way, there would be, um, uh, taking a look at, okay, what are the educational needs of the district, and, you know, what are those space needs, and, you know, would there be, uh, would there be needs that the Ripton Elementary School, um, could, could foresee if Ripton students are not to return there, you know? So, so that, that is certainly one option. The board's taken action for the '25, '26 school year. We would be redoubling, you know, a, a new population analysis to make sure that, um, we're understanding what population projections are for, um, you know, um, for the next five-year period of time. We would also be talking with the members of the community, probably, um, with the select board and anyone they, they sent us to, the, perhaps the Planning Commission or others, about housing developments, anything else that, um, might be happening there relative to, um, increased enrollment, or preferences on the part of the community, um, you know, for how to move forward. That generally takes place at a public meeting, you know, that's warned as such. Um, all of that would, would go into, um, you know, a, a report that could come before the board, um, for you to consider, um, how you wanted to, to handle the situation moving ahead. So, either our office can attend to those things, or, um, you know, the, we can approach this from an independent viewpoint. The, the benefit of that, we've had a lot of good conversation, I think, the, the benefit of thinking about it from an independent standpoint is, is, is possibly bringing someone on who also has a community planning perspective. You know, because there are a lot of implications to a community if, if a school no longer operates, and so, understanding what those are, understanding what mitigation strategies are around that, understanding, um, that if there's new housing planned, what the timing is of that, how, how to manage that gap, all of those things. I think it might be helpful to have some expertise in some of those areas, you know, that, that we don't necessarily hold in our office on a normal basis.
Thanks.
Ellen?
Um, Wendy, do you, I'm not asking you to reveal anybody preemptively, but do you know of people who have that dual expertise, both in kind of the education landscape and, um, yeah, the education landscape as well as community planning, who we could work with?
Um, I, there are some folks that have served in this role, um, you know, in other parts of the state, whether they're available now, you know, is, is hard to say, but, um, but, but certainly, i- if it's an, if it's a direction the board might be interested in, then, um, then that's one I would pursue, you know, and, and come back around to and, and discuss that more fully. You know, I just thought it would be premature to do that before we had some time to consider it together a little bit.
Can I ask a second question? Would you see any value in, um, there being some consistent board engagement throughout that process? I don't know if that's like a board member or a, or a board committee that's sort of, to some degree, keeping their finger on the pulse of that process a little more consistently than the large, than the board at large?
What we have done so far, relative to, um, you know, any, any major conversations that are happening, you know, in, in communities, is to invite members of the, um, commu- commu- Communication and Engagement Committee to, to join, just to, just to be there to listen, uh, in that respect, and so, so we've done that pretty consistently. I did that when I began to transition in as a superintendent, and I, and I think that that's worked fairly well. I haven't thought about it beyond that.
Mary Heather, did you hit your hand up?
Yeah, I did, I guess, you know, uh, I'm, I'm thinking also about the bandwidth of district office, and some of the, um, things we have on tap for this year. Certainly about all the systems development for student achievement, and, um, you know, really tackling some of our strategic planning, so I guess, I'm interested in the idea of having an independent, um, person help guide that process, especially if someone has, comes to it with some experience of having gone through this and having had these conversations. I think, uh, offering that kind of, uh, more neutral perspective, um, in starting the conversation and, um, engaging the sides, I think, could be valuable. Um, so, I'm not sure it's really a question. I think it's more an observation, and just noticing that, um, you know, this is a really important work, um, that should be done with care. So, I, I guess, if, if it's possible to consider, I guess I would, I would really lean into that, um, so that there, that it's done really well and professionally, and from a neutral perspective, because there's so much history here, and even on this board, there's just so much history, and I think, um, having a neutral person help lead us in that conversation might help us, um, all kind of align, um, in, in a way to, to really foster good conversation and, and good problem solving.
Jason, and then Suzanne?
Do you have a sense of the, like, the order of magnitude of what we're talking about in terms of expense? Is this like a $10,000 engagement or $100,000 engagement?
It's probably a $3,500 engagement. Yeah. It's, it's...
Okay, Suzanne?
I was just going to ask, is there something you would like from the board tonight?
That's what I was...
Or do you want us to ponder and come back another time and give you a motion?
No, I, and I don't, I wouldn't need necessarily a, a motion from the board, you know, it's, it's within my powers to do. I just wanted to check in, you know, and just kind of see where we were, and, and, um, you know, I, I think, um, I think what I, what I would like to do is, um, is touch base with, um, the select board, you know, in Ripton, and sort of, um, talk with them about this as well, and then find, see if I can find a resource, and then develop a scope and, and see, see what that looks like, you know, um, so that, so that we're looking at everything from, um, you know, students returning after the '25, '26 year, and what does that look like? What are options around that? And we're also looking at, you know, enrollment projections over a period of five years, Planning Commission, housing development options, you know, um, ways potentially to, to keep a school presence in the community, so that a school doesn't have to be closed, even if perhaps there's a downsizing that can take place, so that we're not, it's, it would be very difficult to reopen anything, I think, in, in, in the climate that we'll be experiencing for a period of time. So, so that we're just looking at all kinds of different options, um, and, and the, and the potential, um, you know, i- impacts of all of that, beginning that process, so. Um, so I'd maybe like to look into it and then, and then report back to you, um, probably the first meeting in May, um, with, with, with the results of that investigation, unless you felt strongly otherwise, or, Steve?
Um, I would like to echo Mary Heather's sentiments about objectivity and having an independent, uh, person look at this. I mean, it, it does kind of take it out of the fire, um, that has been burning around, uh, this topic, and has someone that has a more objective perspective on it. And the second thing that I would like to see, if we do anything like this, is the cost, um, of, you know, of any solution, including, uh, leaving the building not in use, um, but still maintaining it, um, because that could be a cost as well, so...
Steve?
Yeah, I have two thoughts. Um, I hope that this study would kind of, you know, with the way it's written, it's pretty narrow in scope, it sounds like, and I, I hope that it would look at the actual school, but then certainly the larger district system, and how kind of that can fit into that system and role, what role it can play, I think is, could be a fairly narrow facility starting with what's written here, and I, I'm not sure how productive that is. And from what you described, I think there's also, there may be an opportunity in doing this work to capture considerations for the Rip, for the future of Ripton School students.
Right.
The way this is written, the future of the Ripton Elementary School, it's just a building, it's a facility, and if the type of work is done that you're talking about and that Mary Heather and Steve mentioned, um, there's going to be a lot more data to kind of term it that way, that a contractor would interact with, and that could be important information for us to understand. So, I think just making sure, if that's the scope that we want a contractor to work on, or whomever's going to do this, to make it broad, because if it's just the Ripton Elementary School, it's a facilities question in my mind, it's pretty narrow.
Yeah, that's helpful. It, it wasn't a facilities question only in my mind, so it's helped, that's good feedback to, to think about.
Probably how I captured the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'll have some homework, and then I'll, I'll do some investigation, I'll bring something back to you, and I have something that feels somewhat solid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the other item I just wanted to bring you up to speed around, um, is, is just that the, the gray configuration updates, um, that are, um, taking place, particularly now with, uh, Bridgeport and Shoreham, those are, those continue to be underway. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's the first time, uh, either of the members of the Shoreham or Bridgeport community and I have worked together, you know, in that sense, and, uh, and I think, you know, we've, we've, uh, worked through a lot, um, so far, you know, particularly in Shoreham, um, and, uh, and, and it's really great to see people coming together around, you know, the kids and what they will need, and what that looks like, um, and around the teachers, and what their assignment might be, and how, um, they will best handle that, you know, whether it's a multi-grade assignment, or whether it's a single-grade assignment, knowing that there are student achievement needs and success, you know, goals that we're going to need to work on together, so, so those are going well. Um, we have some events, you know, for parents this week, and then, um, we'll, we'll send out a final survey to, um, parents, and also, you know, collecting of the final thoughts of staff, um, so that that'll be due the 28th, and, and at that point, I should have a sense of, of where we're headed, I think, um, and, and I don't right now, quite yet, which is, uh, you know, it's, it's just been interesting to see how this is evolving. They're good conversations, and I'm really glad we're having them, for lots of reasons. Not easy, but good.
Steve?
What are the gray configurations currently at those schools?
So, both schools, for the first time in anyone's memory, are scheduled to have a K1, a 2, 3, and a 4, 5. Um, so they'll both have, uh, class sizes, class sizes that average about 15 students. These schools have had, um, certainly some classes that are mixed grades, um, and then some that are single grades, and, and, and those tend to move depending upon where the enrollment bubbles are, you know, which has caused some curricular gaps, some challenges relative to teaching assignments. Sometimes teachers will end up, you know, having a student for the fourth year in a row unless they, you know, change, so it's, it's pulled parents, um, out of their expertise, you know, I mean, teachers out of their expertise sometimes, which has been challenging. So, you know, I think, given that, um, we have some academic goals that we need to pay careful attention to in both of those schools, um, and, and everybody's going to be in a multi-grade situation, it made sense to just connect together and pause for a minute and say, is this what everybody is comfortable with? You know, as opposed to, um, asking the board to consider, um, something where the students of both schools come together, so that perhaps there's a K1, 2 at one school and a 3, 4, 5 at another, you know, and so that, together, they make, um, classes that are approximately the same size. So, you know, these are different ideas from ideas that I think either community has considered, certainly in the recent past, and, and, um, and, and, you know, they've, they've proven to be very good conversations. Um, and we're unearthing lots of things that, you know, um, previously held beliefs about the role, the, the relationship between the district and the, and the communities... role, the relationship between the district and the, and the communities and the schools and kind of working through those things, you know, alongside determining what would feel best for kids. So, so I'll, should have more of an update for you on the 28th.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Well, the last part of the superintendent's report actually is, is going to be shared by Courtney Cron, who's going to provide an academic update that relates to requirements from the Agency of Ed. There's snapshot data, some continuous improvement planning and some, some new ways of putting together performance data that, that help us to meet their expectations. So.
This is actually the second to last, you forgot Mary.
Yeah. When did I?
I'm advised by Kurt that if I go anywhere past Jason, I can be seen on camera. So I'm thinking of going to that corner right here. Actually, what I'd really like to do is kind of go behind that bookshelf, but I won't do that. But actually, this won't work because I can't see. Can I come join you both right here? So the context for tonight's presentation is the Continuous Improvement Plan, which is a document required by the State Agency of Education. And along with that requirement is the expectation that will involve key stakeholders in the development and review of the plan. And the board is considered a key stakeholder. So the other, one good challenge of the work we do is that we have multiple governing entities. So we have an AOE requiring a Continuous Improvement Plan, among other things. We have a school board that has a strategic plan. And we have other sort of self-imposed external entities like our accrediting agencies, NEASC and IB, who are also helping us reflect on our own goals and holding other expectations for us. So I did some thinking about how can I show you the way that we leverage all of these things to move forward in a strong direction as opposed to chasing many things at once? And I think we do, in fact, leverage all of these things and streamline them. And I've attempted to give a, a pretty basic example of that here. So this presentation is going to review guiding documents and data that inform our work. I'm going to introduce you to the basic goals of our Continuous Improvement Plan and show you some broad AOE snapshot data. Then we're going to go deeper into some of that snapshot data and look at ACSD's elementary proficiency data. And then I have a very brief summary of findings and we can talk about next steps. Guiding documents that inform our work are the ACSD Strategic Plan and our Continuous Improvement Plan. And we have other guiding resources too, but tonight's presentation is really grounded in these two documents. And then key data sources referenced in this presentation are our AOE annual snapshot data, the Vermont Common Assessment or VTCAP data, which is from spring 2024. Some of my colleagues might refer to this data as stale or dusty because it's a year old. And that's true. So if I pause for a second and say, like Dr. Baker was just saying, I've been to our schools this year, I sit in the hallways on my laptop, and there's a lot of good stuff going on. So where we were last spring, I think, isn't even where we are now, but this data is from last spring. And then our screener data, which is more recent data, it's from this fall and winter. Any questions so far? So the annual snapshot is a set of five domains that the AOE uses to measure schools and districts' implementation of the ed quality standards. And the thinking is that these five different domains and the indicators within each of them create a measurement or a score for a district to let them know how they're doing towards that part of the EQS that relates to that domain. Something that's important to note here is that each of these domains is made up of multiple indicators. So it's not just one data set informing one of these domains. And tonight, we're only going to look at the academic proficiency domain, hence that circle. And even that domain alone has multiple indicators. So one of the indicators is our district-wide math literacy and science data. Another indicator is our graduation rate, our growth rate, our college and career readiness score. And tonight, we're only going to be looking at our ELA, math and science data. So we're zooming way in to one indicator of one domain. And even then, we're only going to look at our elementary data. And the reason for that is that, other than sort of shortening the length of this presentation, the secondary data interfaces really well with the personalization domain because of flexible pathways and participation rates in those pathways and our personalized learning plans. So to look at our secondary data from moms and the high school in conjunction with that conversation feels like a follow-up opportunity to tonight. Good so far?
I actually have a question on that.
Okay.
Really briefly, because I realize this is, that's a different topic, but are these other domains assessed by data or are they assessed by qualitative? So other data goes into quantifying our ranking or our rating on these domains?
Yeah, I can answer really briefly. The personalization domain is mostly how many flexible pathways do we offer and what is the participation rate of students in those pathways? Safe and healthy schools is largely attendance and really specifically suspension data. High-quality staffing has to do with the number of licensed administrators and educators who are on the correct licensure. So are they on provisional licenses? Are they on a Level 1, a Level 2 license? And then also retention rates. So are we retaining our high qual, our highly qualified teaching staff? And then investment priorities has to do with per pupil spending and also staffing ratios. And you can have staffing ratios that are too high or too low.
Thanks, Courtney.
So the Continuous Improvement Plan, so we have the snapshot data. Now we have the Continuous Improvement Plan, which some people call SIP or CIP. And the CIP is based on the snapshot data. And it's also based on our comprehensive needs assessment, which, just to keep this short, is an assessment where we define relevant data for our district and we disaggregate it by different groupings of students to look for trends and needs. And then, once we've completed that needs assessment, we use our findings to inform our Continuous Improvement Plan. The Continuous Improvement Plan requires a minimum of two goals. One has to have to do with safe and healthy schools and the other has to have to do with academic achievement. And as I mentioned, it has to be created with stakeholder input, review. Approval is a strong word. I don't think you vote on the CIP, but it's important that you're aware of it. And then something really important to note here is that for the first time, beginning this fall, each school in Vermont, regardless of title status, is going to be required to develop and submit a Continuous Improvement Plan. And that is a requirement of when you submit for your consolidated federal program grants, you have to upload your CIP, currently your CIP. I believe it's now going to be CIPs. So each of our principals is in the process of conducting a comprehensive needs assessment. And they really have been since the beginning of the budgeting process with Matt and Wendy, they've been looking at their data and thinking about what their needs are. So this feels like a natural continuation of that work. But it is also the first time that we're going to be looking at our school data a little more publicly by school. And I say that to provide some context for the forthcoming data. So we're not going to be talking about our safe and healthy schools goal tonight, but I want you to see what it is. It's everyone will feel safe, welcomed and included in our schools in the district. Students and families will be able to engage with the school system in valuable ways. And if that goal's familiar to you, because it's your goal from the strategic plan. So this is to say, your strategic plan really does help us leverage the work of the state and the district. And I think those two goals align nicely together. And our second goal is your goal three from the strategic plan. ACSD's learning environment will inspire a passion for learning and value diverse identities and abilities while preparing our students to make positive contributions to the community and beyond. And tonight's data does relate directly to this goal. And for that reason, Jason, if you give us one click, I wanted to break down your targets from the strategic plan a little bit. So your, your success goal in the strategic plan goal three has five targets associated with it. And all five of those targets are written directly into our CIP. And the annual snapshot data relates really well to these targets. But the data that we're going to look at tonight under the academic proficiency domain really relates to your first two targets right here, which relate to raising our cohort proficiency in math and literacy to a target of 80% in five years. And then also decreasing the achievement gap between the general population and the historically marginalized population, which is juxtaposition that those two populations that the state provides in its snapshot data, which I'm going to show you. So again, just to say, the way you've written those targets aligns nicely with how the state lays out the snapshot data. So far, so good? Yeah. This is the state definition of historically marginalized students. Okay. What you're looking at here would be like the cover page of ACSD's annual snapshot data. All of this data is public. You can find it by searching AOE snapshot data Vermont and then typing in our district. And you can go pretty deep into each individual school and into each individual school's domain. And then further beyond that, Dr. Baker and I have access to password-protected suppressed data that's not public. So these are the five domains. And this is ACSD's overall ranking according to the state and the, the data that they have for us. And the first column where it says performance has our current performance. There's a key in the lower right-hand corner. And even though I said we're only going to talk about academic proficiency, this is just giving you sort of a broad overview of where our current rating is. So the state says we're meeting for academic proficiency and that our performance change is trending upwards. But then the column next to that, where it says equity index, is showing the current performance or proficiency of our historically marginalized groupings. So currently, that hollow circle is showing that we're not meeting for academic proficiency and that our change is trending downwards. Overall, and I should also say, this includes moms in the high school. So this broad overview page is all of our school's data. And the academic proficiency category, remember, has multiple indicators. So that isn't related to just the data we're going to see tonight. And you can see for personalization, we're approaching the standard without a lot of change. Safe and healthy schools, we're meeting the standard, but trending down, however, trending up for growth in that area with our historically marginalized groups. High-quality staffing, meeting but trending down, which isn't a real surprise with the hiring seasons that we've seen post-COVID, I think. And then our investment priorities are approaching and trending down. And again, all of this data is really at your fingertips. Okay. So this is, if you zoom in a little further into our ELA data for English Language Arts, again, this is still all of our schools. And this slide will be followed by our, our actual elementary VTCAP data and screener data. It's a little hard to see from here, but overall, we're approaching the standard in ELA. And then the scale is sort of our raw data. It says we're not meeting, but our growth, which takes into account our last three years' worth of performance data, which is interesting considering that the VTCAP is only in its second year of, currently, our students are taking the third year of the VTCAP, but we only have two years of data sets. But according to this, we're meeting for growth in ELA. And you can see those ratings really near the state of Vermont. And then in our equity index, I think we have a celebration in the excelling area. We're experiencing an accelerated amount of growth for historically marginalized groups of students despite the fact that overall, we're still not meeting the standard. Okay. So for me, it's hard to digest data and have someone talk at me at the same time, but there's a couple of things I'd like to note about this slide. First of all, it lumps together grades three through five for each school. So we did that in order to not compromise students' identities and be able to stay within the guidelines of FERPA. Also, the arrows at the top indicate a percent change, all of which in this context are pretty small changes. And this is our ELA data. So this slide will be followed by our ELA screener data. And then we'll look at the same data for math.
Courtney, can you explain what, what screener data is?
Yeah.
Is that coming?
Yeah, that is coming. Is everyone ready to go on to this? Great. So screener, the first thing I just want to say before I explain screener data is that this says grades three through five and the previous slide said grades three through five, but these are not the same third through fifth graders because the previous slide was last year and this is fifth year. Screeners, sort of like a hearing screener or a vision screener, are assessments that we give students in all of our grades through ninth grade and even to some of our 10th graders in math, literacy, and we also have a social emotional screener. And the idea is to cast a, a wide assessment and see who stands out as possibly needing more support in that area. And then from there, we can go further and do diagnostic assessments and progress monitoring assessments. And this year, for the first time, the state of Vermont is requiring all schools to have screeners for grades K through 3 in literacy and to notify families if their students are substantially below proficient in those screeners. And so we implemented that practice for the first time this year and we had these screeners in place. So we're glad that we're sort of in line with that expectation of the state.
Thanks. I know it's bad practice to go back in data when people are talking about, but can you go back one slide? So the, and I know the font's very small at the bottom, but those percentages that say low income, that is the percentage of those third through fifth graders that qualify as low com, low income is how I should understand that number?
Yes, the percentage of students living in low-income households as defined by our direct CERT data. From last spring, those numbers.
Jason?
So just as an example here, like let's say, look at Mary Heather.
So just as an example here, like let's say, look at Mary Hogan, they're 58% proficient, 42% not proficient as of spring of last year. And if we jump ahead to look at the screener data, now it says 73, 71 proficient, 27, 29% proficient. That seems like a huge jump or a miscalibration between the screener data and the VT cap.
So there's two things. One, it is, you know, a different, slightly different cohort of students, although there's some overlap in the middle. Also, screener data is really looking at a lot of skill-based performance indicators. Can you read? What is your phononic awareness? Some vocabulary testing in the case of ELA, where the VT cap data is really rooted in the Common Core standards and is expecting even as early as second grade that students are able to do a lot of things with the text that they've read. So we have a software called Edge climber, and you can draw correlations between two data sets to see how closely they correlate. And there is a correlation between the tests and FastBridge says, oh yes, we're standards based, but also not all states around the country use the Common Core standards. So to say it's standards based is accurate, and I don't think they're directly aligned. And we're in discussion about assembling a committee in ACSD to look at all of our assessments and the indicators that we're hoping to collect data on and have a discussion about, do we have the right assessments in place for gathering the data we need to be gathering? That was a long answer to your question.
I'm just wondering, the crux of my question is, does this screener data, is it predictive of the VT cap data that students are taking right now?
I think yes and no. I think not directly. Some people will argue there's a tight correlation, and we can see very few released items of the VT cap. We can't look at the test itself, although they do informative assessments we can look at. And FAST, because it's also a computer adaptive test, it's really hard to get a direct sense of, we've tried to put the questions side by side, but I think you should think of the screener as more explicit, skill-based, and the VT cap is asking students to do a lot of analysis, even as early as second grade. What emotions does this word or passage make you feel? What do you think the author is trying to tell the audience as opposed to the screener, which is much more about reading, vocabulary, and early literacy sort of skills?
Before we jump off this, so there's, in some schools, quite a difference between fall and winter. So can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, I wish we had our spring data up here. But I feel really good about what I think it would show.
Okay.
But the expectations of the assessment increase. So it's not, we're not asking of the students during our winter window the same things we were asking of them in the fall. And so to even stay at the same level of performance, a student has to learn on a pretty tight trajectory. So that could be the reason for a dip in winter. It's not uncommon that we see a dip in the winter. There's all other kinds of factors that come along with a winter screening window, too.
Laura has her hand up. Okay, Laura.
When you say winter, when in the winter?
You mean half the year?
We have a window, and schools are able to choose within that window when they assess, but I want to say off the top of my head, it opens like early November, and it might even span past the winter break. I have to double check.
That's kind of the question I'm getting at. Are we pre-winter break or are we post-winter break? Because I feel like that could...
I'd have to double check the exact window, and then even within that, I think every school sort of has their own feelings about when's the best time to go for this. But I would say there's probably not many good times.
It'd be really interesting to see that, like when that was taken on this as well.
Yeah, and the principals will tell you too about the VT cap data. We're just finishing it, and this is like prime learning time. So we're taking that snapshot sort of as we're heading the peak of the learning experience. And some schools finished testing almost a month ago now, so even that's a broad window. This is our K2 ELA data. We went backwards just because the VT cap was 3.5, so then FAST 3.5, and now FAST Are you all ready to keep moving? So the annual snapshot data for math indicates that we're approaching the standard overall, same with the state of Vermont. Our raw data shows that we are not meeting the standard, same with the state of Vermont. And then in both cases, we are meeting the standard for growth over the course of the last three years. For our equity index, I'll just point out here again that we are showing as excelling in growth for students in this category, even though overall, we're not meeting the
If you look at the top or the first thing with the five different colors of the media exceeding, this was several slides ago now, and the equity index showed that we were headed downwards change-wise, and now these are saying that we're excelling or exceeding.
You're talking about academic proficiency?
It's a little backwards to me. Like this seems to be contradicting what the first...
You're talking about this slide?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that first slide is taking into account multiple indicators. And if you were to go in and dig in, you could probably find out which indicators are bringing our score up and which are bringing our score down. But again, it's, for example, the college and career readiness indicator is how many students do you have in career center courses, enrolled in colleges, or taking college-level courses during high school? It's a nut, that's just an example. So that overall score is taking into account probably seven different indicators, which are all broken down further, and this is just one part of one of those indicators.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
And Courtney, this one that we're looking at now, is this for, is this include secondary students or is this just, this is everyone?
This is everyone, yep. So this is our VT cap data in math. And I think you'll see if we go to our three through five FAST data, sort of a similar story to what you saw in ELA. And to Jason's question about, you know, the correlation between the two data sets, I feel really hopeful about this data. I'm just going to say it again. There's good things going on in our schools. Teachers are looking at this data. Our schools are unpacking it. And I think all of these scores are only going to go up. I'm really curious what data we're going to be looking at a year from now.
I have a question. I'm curious, just, I mean, obviously, Dr. Baker, you can't answer this because you've only been here for less than a year, but it seems to me that even though we're only able to look at it in this configuration, grades three through five, because we don't have the password protect, we're not able to look at groups of kids less than 12 members, but somebody must be looking at this data. I'm just curious why this hasn't bubbled up before, because these, I mean, I'm bothered by these. I'm real bothered. And it just seems problematic to me that there hasn't been another way to convey this urgency to the board, even though some schools can't report because their classes are too small. I just, I don't know, it's not really a question, I guess. I'm just making a conservation, and I guess that's all I'm doing now. But this concerns me, and I'm glad we've, boy, am I glad we did the equity-based budgeting and that we're really working on this and putting the data front and center. Yeah, we need to be accountable for this, and I, yeah.
I don't want to give a spoiler alert, but I think on the summary and next steps slide is the place where maybe I'll say it again, but I'll just say now, we are looking at this data, and I think a lot of the budgeting process focused on an early comprehensive needs assessment style data analysis that went on at the school level, and our investment priorities reflect these realities. And that actually is the intended sort of trajectory of the AOE, that you conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. Based on that, you write grant investments. Then if your grants are approved, based on what's approved, you make your plan. And they've shifted the whole timeline so that this year, principals don't have to submit their comprehensive needs assessments until June.
Till they have info, yeah.
Yeah, and then we submit our grants, and then they have the whole summer to think about their plan for next school year, and in September, they submit their SIP, which is to say, I think, our whole district budgeting process reflected that. I feel hopeful about the strategies we've decided to implement. And I'm just going to say it one more time, the schools our kids are sitting in right now aren't the schools they were sitting in last year all around. And actually, Dr. Baker and I were with the Bridgeport and Shoreham staff this afternoon at their staff meeting for a little bit, and they wanted us to note, they were looking at this data, and they wanted us to note the high levels of turnover in those schools, especially among administrators. And the principal is the lead instructional learner, so they play a really important role in the school, and they wanted us to note that to you all.
Yeah.
Looking at the data, we, in the past, long past, have looked at the data, and that's where the district at one point hired the Jessica Lynches and such, and did very specific, targeted teacher work and student work around math and literacy. And before Jessica was hired in that position, my daughter in Bridgeport, as part of this community, went through five different math programs. By the time she hit middle school, she couldn't do math because nobody was speaking the same language because there were so many different math programs. So, you know, it's nice that we're getting to see some more of this data again. I truly wish that we were back in that time where we could look grade level by grade level as far as student data, but I think those days are long gone. But it will be interesting to see how things come along. And to the Bridgeport piece, Bridgeport's had a history of a revolving door of principals that last maybe three or four years and then they're gone. So that's unfortunately, nothing really new, thanks to Tor.
We do have some structural things in place that are important. You know, our math curriculum is well-aligned with VT cap. So when it's not, that's a significant lift, and that's not one that we have to do. You know, there are a number of supports in place that we've talked about from the FY26 budgeting year, right? We have instructional specialists in math. We have, you know, Courtney and I just lined up about $100,000 of math professional development, you know, that folks are going to be able to take, that I, I mean, some people are particularly excited, I think, about some of the folks that are still involved in providing strong math professional development that have been in times when this district has had a stronger presence. But essentially, you know, remember, this also reflects coming out of a pandemic. And coming out of the pandemic and then two years of a superintendence transition, so that, you know, it's hard to kind of get everything going in the right direction when you're in limbo like that. And so, you know, this is states, you know, all over the country are at this place, you know, where they're picking that up again and moving forward. We might be a little behind that, given the transitions, but, you know, I think we're well-positioned to be able to dig in in the right ways, and everybody's excited to do that. I do believe that, you know, the, unless a mistake in the student results that are coming from this assessment will look a bit different. We still, we will still have student performance challenges we need to work through, but I think we're on the right trajectory. And, you know, we've hired some really wonderful principals in the district that are supporting teachers well and focused on the right thing, supervision and evaluation process that the committees have worked on have really prompted folks to have the right conversations together, the right goals together. We met in September, every principal with the curriculum teams and to say, what, let's look at this data, who are the individual kids, to your point, behind this data? Who's going up, who's not? So we've done that work, and I think that that will help, you know, and we'll continue to move forward, and everybody's excited to do that.
So when I look at the data, it really, for me, drives back the presentation that you provided us back in June, a year ago, right, about stability that we need in our schools. And we didn't see this yet, but my gut was telling me, you know, I'm not surprised, and that lack of stability was critical, and for the board to really do something about that. And that's why the urgency was around doing something, in my mind, for D6 as really this. It's the kids and the outcomes.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we haven't mentioned is when you have bubbles of kids that are coming through, and then you have teachers changing assignments, you miss curricular years. And so that plays a factor, particularly in math, you know, and that's a challenge. So this is part of the reason that we're having such in-depth conversations, you know, in both Bridgeport and Shoreham, to make sure that we are choosing a delivery model intentionally, and the parents are together, everybody's together, which, you know, whatever we're choosing, we're choosing intentionally, and we know how to best support what we're doing. And I think those conversations have been productive. Those communities will, because they're in that conversation, will be talking about this data, you know, as parents, together, multiple communities on Wednesday, you know, as just part of this discussion.
Laura has her hand up. Okay, Laura.
I know that, you know, we talk about the VT cap and all these things. I'd love to see what the VT cap looks like from a kid's perspective, like what the test actually looks like as they're going through it, because I think without that level of information, it's harder, at least at the board level, to make as informed decisions, I think, or at least understanding of the situation. We don't have the power to show you that.
Yeah, I know.
We have to sign an NDA.
Yeah, we don't in that respect, but, you know, I mean, it's certainly something that we can provide additional information around, you know. It's an adaptive test, which is different, you know, than a lot of kids are used to. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't skew the results to this degree, you know, the kids not being used to that kind of thing, you know. But it's a factor, it's a stamina issue, you know, sometimes in kids. That would be our last 10%.
And then Suzanne and Ellen?
Are there release items?
There are some.
The recap that the board could see, like a printed copy of, these are some sample questions. I know they used to do it for Sback, so I'm thinking that...
Yeah, with the correlating grade level.
Yep.
I could share them with Wendy, and she can figure out, is that a spotlight? Is it a... Is it, we'll do that.
Ellen?
I think it could be interesting to look at BT cap. I don't think it especially matters what our opinion of it is, because it's what the state sets the standard at, and our strategic plan is based on those state standards. And so we're working towards 80% proficiency. That's the, they set the goalpost, and we're trying to meet it. So I wouldn't belabor that as a board. I also share, I think, Mary Heather, your distress at sort of how long it has, and in my experience, sort of convoluted it has felt to get this level of clarity. So Courtney, I really appreciate the way that you're sharing the information. I think that the creation of a student outcomes committee is long overdue, but a great next direction for the board, especially because we did really draft and pass a strategic plan that is so centered around these outcomes. So being able to really see it this, again, just very clearly presented, and to continue to engage in a consistent manner with that information is going to be really crucial for us as a board, because I think it's come here and there, but it's always felt a little bit like a moving target, and very hard to retain an understanding of what's happening with students on some of these essential metrics that we are being evaluated by and that we should use to guide our decision-making.
Mary Heather.
Just to follow up on Ellen's point too, and I think I just want to bring attention to, you know, Courtney, kind of in the introduction of all these standards and, you know, mentioned the sort of multi-pronged approach, right? And so I think this is an opportunity for us as a board to hear, like, oh, there are other ways of measuring. And I know we're trying to get at that with the Student Achievement Ad-Hoc Committee. So I think, you know, we're looking at this one lens, and I know obviously there are other lenses, and, you know, I'm hopeful that the committee can work with Courtney and Dr. Baker to identify some other measures where we can also look at and see how the kids are doing, so that we have a more three-dimensional perspective. So, I mean, I don't think our strategic plan goals have any reference to screening data, for example, but that's a nice way of looking at things. So I'm just kind of taking note of that and thinking, like, oh, okay, there will be these other layers that perhaps our committee can help eliminate.
Steve?
No, I don't want to cut you off, Mary.
No, go ahead, go ahead, I'm done.
Just to further build on that, I do look forward to seeing more data. I also can appreciate that this is a good way to level set. And, you know, you can certainly get into the conversation about mean, median, in data, and I think this does a great job of not covering over the low performers with the really high performers. It establishes that level set, and then you can see the variation from there. And so I do look forward to more data. I think this is a great way to set that level and to kind of base establishment of where we're at. I don't think we're going to have it tonight, but I would be very curious down the line to understand, just in terms of data privacy, what it looks like for students as they go through ACSD, and what sort of data profiles are created about kids as they take these tests. It's not a world that I know much about, but I would really, really like to understand how that works and what students come out with as far as their digital luggage, per se, so.
Yeah, it's an interesting point.
Not tonight.
Their digital luggage is really...
It's a great term.
Not tonight, I don't, I know your slides don't cover that, so.
Well, the last slide is math, K2. I think there's just a lot of celebrations right there. And if everyone's ready, we can quickly look at science. The science data, all of the, I think it's just two slides, it's all secondary data because science, students test in science in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade, so we really can't split it out by school, per se. We're meeting the standard overall in our science proficiency, which is one area where we depart from the state of Vermont, and our trend is not straight up, but diagonal up, which is really a different direction than the trend of the state of Vermont, which stood out to me here. And also in our equity index, although we're not meeting, we are on the upward trajectory in growth. So that's our overall science data. And, I mean, this slide is really, really high-level, because in the first, you have the state data, three grades lumped together, and then three grades. So really, you would take this data with a grain of salt. So it's a very basic summary. Although our overall academic proficiency, which is the domain we looked at a little bit tonight, is meeting, an analysis of individual school data reveals disparity in achievement across buildings, we've all just discussed that. Celebrations, we have accelerated growth for historically marginalized populations in several areas, I would say. And science is our strongest overall area of proficiency, so we're talking a lot about math and literacy, as we should be, but our science data is good. And a celebration that's not up here and that several of you have named, and I just, I would feel remiss if I don't do it one more time, is that state testing data is such, it's one slice of one of our students, and our students are so dynamic and comprehensive, and they're doing so many awesome things, and our educators are so dynamic, and they're doing a lot of awesome things, so that just feels like something to be said. Our classrooms are really joyful places. And then we have a lot of identified areas to focus on, and really, they've all been said in this conversation, but our investment priorities point us toward math and literacy instruction, K8. ACSD is in the process, so among our staff of forming an assessment data committee, and then you as a board have established a student outcomes committee, so we're all talking about data. And then last Wednesday, during early release, Barb joined us, and our, they're called our learning principal teams, which are groups of students, educators, and community members who really dug into evidence of impact in ACSD as it relates to student learning against five different standards that we've prioritized. Each of these groups shared their findings of the evidence and gave recommendations for next steps and celebrations. And there were a lot of stories and a lot of pieces of evidence shared there that don't show up in the snapshot data, so I just want to name that. But there are also recommendations coming out of that work that will align with these goals and help us stay focused. And we're also talking about stronger K5 school-to-home data sharing practices, so we want our elementary families to know about the digital luggage, or to, you know, like have a little bit more of a consistent idea of how their students are doing, and making sure that progress reports that go home do align, more or less, with the reality we're seeing in the classroom.
Make sure your bags are packed.
Correctly.
Any final thoughts or questions?
Thank you so much. Yes, oh, Ron has a question. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, thank you so much, Courtney, that was incredibly helpful. I just, I think I'm echoing what Mary Heather said. Of course, I understand that standardized testing is a super useful tool for understanding where we're at, kind of comparatively and across schools and between districts and the rest of the state. But I would love to hear more, probably not tonight, about, I guess, the more qualitative modes of assessing where students are at? Maybe even self-assessment that students gave about their learning achievements?
Yeah, for sure. That self-assessment was a theme that stood out in last Wednesday's presentations, and the use of self-assessment and peer assessment in the district, which is great, and I think a recommendation for more of. So a yes and.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Courtney. Thank you so much. This was very helpful. Next is the McGilton Fund.
Actually, actually, we do have one more part of the superintendent's report, so we saved the best for last.
I don't want to be rude, but students have forgotten one there. So every year, around this time, we bring to board a memo on the McGilton Fund. I put a little summary in there that kind of lists why we're doing that, and I'll read it for the record here. So, McGilton Fund is a trust fund dedicated to aid the educational interests of all Millbury Elementary School students. Per the ACSD Articles of Agreement, this and any school-based fund will be used in accordance with the specified conditions of the endowment. Each year, a distribution of 4.5% of the previous 12-quarter average is used to fund various activities as described in the proposed budget prepared by Mary Heather and Principal Jen Crapitz. This distribution historically occurs in spring and uses the calendar year as the marker of the 12 quarters. So for instance, the 12-quarter average that we're using tonight is calculated using the quarterly fund balances from all of calendar year, 2022, 23, 24. So we average the fund balance, and you can see there that, you know, the balance has been hovering somewhere in the high eights to mid nines in terms of the hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's always kind of fun to point out that this started as a $5,000 gift to the school district back in 1950, a teacher, Mary Hogan, who left $5,000 to the ACSD school boards to take care of, and it has grown over time to better part of millions. I get a kick out of that. Four and a half percent of the 12-quarter average is there at the bottom, $40,787.72. Before recommending the motion, I will say that, you know, just in terms of the timeline, and one of the reasons that, you know, Jen isn't here is that we've historically sort of done this spring distribution to fund the remainder of the school year. And so it was like, every single school year, you needed to have a budget that got interrupted in the spring because the money would need to be distributed. And so in an effort to change that so that her academic calendar lines up with the McGilton distribution, we took a little bit extra the last time, I think it was $7,000 or $8,000, and this amount that you're seeing here will essentially be the operating budget for all of FY26. So this is money forward to next year. And before we pick things up for FY26, we'll hear from Jen, or y'all hear from Jen, to discuss the intent for the funds at Mary Hogan and FY26. She's working on that, and that'll be the next chapter of this. This is just authorizing the distribution for the sake of doing our annual funding of the account. So we would therefore recommend that the board move to authorize the transfer of funds in the amount of $40,787.72 from the McGilton Investment Fund into the National Millbury Elementary School. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions, discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of moving the McGilton Funds, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent, thank you. So that is the end of the superintendent's report.
That concludes the superintendent's report, yes.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. It was really a valuable report, as always. Next up is report of the chair, and for some reason, I am having problems connecting. So can everyone see the, yeah. Yeah, I have, I found it on my card, yeah. Seen a copy of what the executive committee put together as a draft for the student outcomes committee charge, and thanks those who had actually sent in some emails with some suggestions as well. I can read it?
I don't have that, probably, if anybody can send me that.
It's in the meeting, Miss Aaron.
It's LinkedIn.
Oh, you did it?
You can access it through...
So why don't I just go ahead and read it? The Student Outcomes Committee is charged with working with the administration to clarify how strategic plan goals around student outcomes will be supported and reported, including, first, identifying additional targets that should be incorporated into student outcomes reporting to reflect the district's vision regarding student success; advising on how best to build the board's understanding on a comprehensive picture of student achievement across the district; advising on how to report student achievement to the board and community; and providing regular updates to the full board regarding student outcome discussions. Thoughts, questions?
Do you want a motion on the table to discuss it?
We can do that.
What do you want?
Yeah, let's do that. Can I have a motion, and then we'll, there'll be room to, you know, make changes, to accept the Student Outcome Committee charge?
I'll move to accept the Student Outcome Committee charge as printed, read, whatever.
Yep, and sir, a second.
Second.
Jason's got it.
Jason, okay. Oh, thank you, Jason, thank you. And discussion. Steve?
I'm not sure who crafted this, but I can appreciate the focus on, you know, the strategic plan goals reset. The role of this committee will be figuring out how to support those and not kind of, you know, remaking that wheel. I think it's a great place to start from, rather than having to kind of contemplate going back on any of that work in that way. That comes down from the board, and it just makes sense for a committee to work through it in that way.
Thank you.
I can save... Tricia?
Courtney, have you had a chance to look through these and interact with this, this charge? Because I believe Courtney is going to be the administrative representative for the committee, I guess.
I like that idea.
This is my understanding, Courtney.
We hope so.
Yeah, Barb and Mary Heather, somebody has shared different versions of this with me, and I've been watching it evolve over the last couple of weeks, and I think it'll be a bit of an organic process experiencing what's on folks' minds and where you want to go, and I'm excited to hear about what is on your mind and where you want to go.
Jamie?
I think this is great. I'm curious why, I'm just looking, it looks like it's different. In other words, this is bullet points, and the other committee descriptions are paragraph? Is that just because this is the preliminary thing, or do we plan on making description look like the other committee descriptions, or is that not a concern?
Well, when, as a committee, we thought bullet points are so much easier to read. And, you know, maybe the other committees should change, you know, I don't know. Go ahead, Mary Heather.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, for us, it helped us in incorporating some of the different ideas and kind of compare and contrast and make sure that some of the things that were two different ideas were boiled down, and we could say, okay, yeah, we got that, we got that. And also make sure that we were trying to be as comprehensive as we could, but still staying in the board's lane and not veering into operational stuff. And so just for the purposes of our committee's review of that, bullet points seem to... And so, just for the purposes of our committee's review of that, bullet points seem to be easier. I, I think it would be fine to keep it in a bullet point way just for public understanding of the committee's charge. So, it wasn't necessarily intentional, like this is how we want it. I am bothered by the fact that there's periods on the second, third. We can fix that. But that's just my grammar not seeing come out.
I think too, this is a brand-new committee, and it's an ad hoc committee. It's, there's a lot in the Vermont School Board Association, all that kind of thing about rules and responsibilities, like for finance and, you know, for the other committees. And so, in this particular case, I think making it as clear as possible so that us as board members, but also the community, really know what the charge is, what we're going to be discussing. And I kind of like the bullet list from that perspective. And so, I think that would argue that we could keep this one maybe a little more structured this way so that people might have a little better ability to read it. And Suzanne is always telling me that, you know, these big paragraphs, I need to, I need to make bullet lists more so. So, she's right.
I read, I read reports all day long. And I mean, after a while, you know, paragraph after paragraph after paragraph just blends into the next. But when you can see bullet points, it's like, ah, I've got to really deal with that, you know?
So, she's absolutely right. So, anyway. Others? Feedback, something, question, a change? Are we ready to?
Yeah.
Do a vote on this and adopt this?
A bullet? A vote, please. A vote? Did I say a bullet? Yes.
Oh, my gosh. I thought I said votes.
No, I have a vote.
Steve has a second.
Yes.
The only word I may consider offering a change on is just around. Like, if it's the Student Outcomes Committee, we're not going around student outcomes.
Where are you?
Where is it?
Oh, in the intro.
Second one.
Working with the administration to clarify how strategic plan goals.
Oh.
Related to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, focused on something.
Okay. Related to.
Related to, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Can we remove the first colon and lower base that W, please?
Yep.
Yep.
Two colons in one sentence seems like kind of a lot.
Is that supposed to be a bullet?
No, we could, we could change that.
Yeah.
Again, it was kind of like more.
Including.
We kind of. It had three documents up.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's a good change. I could do a motion to amend, or are we okay with just adopting it with the changes? I think we're good.
The moderator will take this stuff.
Yes, exactly. That's what I was hoping. So, all those in favor of approving the Student Outcomes Committee Charge, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension, abstentions? Excellent. We have a committee charge, so now this committee can meet. And so, you know, Dr. Baker and Courtney will try to, you know, work with Darcy to get the committee members together so a chair can be elected and that kind of thing. Okay? Excellent. Next up, negotiation committee appointments. I'd sent an email out, I believe it was on Friday, that talked about the negotiations committee. When I first, when we first got together and did kind of new committee assignments, I was under the impression that there wasn't going to be that much activity because we had already just, it seemed like yesterday, approved a contract, right? We have a three-year for the teachers and a two-year for support staff. Well, if you start looking at the calendar, unfortunately, that committee really needs to gear up again. And so, I believe, Steve, you're willing to continue, Suzanne, you're willing. And, and I believe, you know, Jamie, you are kind of busy with two other new committees, right?
It's fine.
Well, no, if you want to stay on, you can.
No, it's fine.
Yeah. And so, if there is someone interested in serving on this committee, please let me know so that we can have three members.
It's really fun.
I would just say that if you are thinking about doing this, the actual negotiations are, it's a pretty major time commitment. Rather frequently, the sessions do go rather long. And dealing with a lot of complex issues and studying the contract pretty thoroughly. And we get a lot of great support from the superintendent, from all of the staff at Central Office, but does require a fair amount of work. I mean, considering all the other committees I've been on, it's probably one of the biggest ones in terms of time commitment. So, I want you to be clear about what you're signing up for.
Really sound.
Tarn.
I know, but it is necessary. It's probably one of the more necessary things to do, so.
Yeah.
And it is one that does require, I mean, it requires someone that wants to put the time in because there is a lot. I mean, I clerked it, and there's, this person makes this change, or this group makes this change, and this group makes this change. And then you've got to make sure it's all in there incorrectly. And there's a lot of work that goes on with it. Last year, the district was nice enough that they fed us.
Yes.
Because we didn't meet during the supper hour. Maybe if we hadn't been fed, we would have been out of there quicker. Probably not, but. But it was consistent. It was like every other week for, I don't know, six months.
And the good news is the three, yes. There is good news. The teacher's contract was three years, and purposely, the support staff was two so that we wouldn't have to be doing them the same year, right? So.
No, because if you do your factors, you will end up.
Eventually.
Eventually be happy twice again.
Oh, dear.
Unless you change the teachers to two.
Okay. We have to, yeah, figure out how to stagger this. Well, at least this go around, it's not the same.
It's okay, we just have to make it for the next three years, and then the schedule.
It's constant, right?
Just as a new board member, I'll second Jason. You're not really selling it.
I tried. Laura?
So, negotiations is the only committee that you can't serve on if you have a spouse who is employed by the district?
Yes.
So, don't worry about it.
We don't need to sell you, Steve. The food was, you know.
Yeah, it was close. It was close.
Hey, it's good Steve Marinelli did a great job feeding us. And I really appreciate what he did.
So, if you are, have interest, I mean, when I was a new board member, I was on the committee. And it's a good place to learn, and especially if you're with a couple of people that have been through the process before, so. Next, my list is goal-setting session update. So, after giving it some thought, instead of sending out a doodle poll, I brought this up at the executive committee last week when we met. And I said, you know, I'm wondering if we just can't use regular board time, such as April 28th, for our goal-setting session because there's spring break in there and all that. And we had just had a special board meeting on the 31st. And I checked with Dr. Baker and, you know, is there really something really critical that we would have to discuss at that meeting? And it seems like it's clear that we could really pretty much dedicate April 28th as our goal-setting session. So, I just thought I would bring that up. And looking at what we did last year, if you remember, we did a survey for the board members that were here last year, right? Then we took the results of those surveys and then summarized it. And then folks, board members, really wanted the opportunity to really give their top five choices, which we did. And that really then formed the basis for selecting the goal that we did, which then brought in equity-based budgeting, right? Which was really great. So, what I, instead of starting the process over, since there was really a lot of work that we had done, what we are proposing is that we just come in with the results in the survey and the rankings that we did last year, and then look at what's, what else is there. And so, what I'll do is send out before the meeting, so that you have time to look at it, kind of a summary of the rank ordering that we have done before so that by the time you get to the meeting, you know, we can make the time as productive as possible. So, look forward to an email. You know, we'll be able to do some basic board work, I think, on the 28th. But we won't have any scheduled presentations, that kind of thing. It'll be really a working session. And what I plan to do is for our three new board members, Wendy and I, on the 21st, is going to have a kind of an orientation as part of onboarding, right? To introduce them to these governance rules and kind of the process we went through last year so that hopefully they'll feel a little bit more comfortable and part of the process.
Why weren't we not starting that meeting early with dinner?
We didn't talk about that today, did we? Do we need to?
I think it would be nice.
Okay. If we did start it early, at 5:30 and brought dinner in, would that work for everyone?
I'm all for it.
We could do that.
The 28th.
Yep.
Yeah.
Two Mondays from now.
I would have to check, but probably.
Okay. Yep. So, let me know if you have a conflict with doing that because it's really important for all of us to be able to participate as we're setting this in. And these goals are not only important for the board, but it also then helps to direct what the superintendent's work is, like last year, equity-based budgeting. Go figure what we did, which was amazing, right? So, it's really important work. And by doing that, we're actually doing one of the governance items by doing goal-setting, which is pretty cool, too. Jason?
Do you expect the meeting to be like an extended duration or typical duration?
I hate to put my opinion out there because then I think we can do it, you know, in regular duration. You know? You know, I guess it's define what regular duration is. Yeah. It's, it's really, it's not like we're going to pick 100 goals to work on. It's just like, okay, now that we have this one that is based on equity-based budgeting, right? I don't remember exactly the words, I'm not looking at it. Now, what do we do, right? And what would be a really good focus in addition to that work that we, we've started? And Suzanne has told us that maybe we'll have the rubric. I'm not promising.
I'm not promising either. I mean, I get, I've seen them as a member of the VSA board, but we've been silenced. We can't give them out. But we've been told the AOE is supposedly releasing them to the VSA next week to hopefully disperse. They've said that before, so.
So, that would be real helpful, I think. Yes, Mary Heather?
The other thing is, I think in order to try to be efficient in our meeting time, Barb was going to send out, you know, kind of our list with the priority rules that we had identified last year and just kind of have a reminder of that process that we went through to narrow it down to those. So, it'll be helpful for folks to have, you know, gone through, read those, contemplated those so that when we show up, we're all ready to kind of dig in and say, what, what makes sense for the next thing to work on? And I think we'll probably have like, you know, we'll have a couple of housekeeping things that we have to take care of at the beginning of the meeting, but it's not going to be a packed.
Agenda.
Or at least, that's not what we're planning.
Yes. Please.
Who knows, things can come up.
Yes. Hopefully not. Okay? And so, I figured instead of scheduling yet another meeting, special meeting, that this would work out better. Excellent. Thank you. So, that's what I had on my list. What we have next is the second public comment period. And then we have an executive session that's on the agenda as well. So, let's first see if we have public comment in the room or on Zoom.
Who's on Zoom?
Nope, none in the room. Anyone? Nope? Okay. Excellent.
I think if you don't mind, Courtney and I will take our leave. We are representing the district out of state in the morning. So, we will leave Matt to support you.
I was going to say, I hope you can keep Matt, though.
In your, in your work.
The Chinese car.
Yes, yes. We feel that you'll be in good hands.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one, one thing, if you don't mind? I thought it was really brave of Nalbut to express some concerns that she kind of gathered from all of her classmates. And I wonder, beyond kind of the, at the school level, at the departmental level, at the, assuming the district level, there's any way to address that concern about continuity with teachers? I didn't feel like she got a super full answer to that concern.
Yeah. So, principals are in charge of building assignments, you know? And, and I think she, I think she mentioned that, you know, the students are going to talk things over with Caitlin, and that's the process, you know, that, that they should have. And there are all kinds of good reasons sometimes to move teachers, you know, in buildings. And, and those are, you know, those are, principals are entrusted with those responsibilities. So, that said, impassioned students are our favorite kind of students. And so, you know, Caitlin does a really nice job working with students, you know, to make sure that they're heard. So, so we'll see how this works out.
Okay, thanks for your answer.
Yeah, thank you.
Drive safely.
Thank you. Yes, please do. And so, let's go ahead and move into executive session. And we'll do a motion. And then, Kurt, what'll happen is we'll give you time to pack up. And then you don't need to return because we purposely put it at the end of the agenda for you.
Thank you.
Okay? So.
Ready?
Yeah.
This is one of those, you have to make two motions.
Yeah.
So, the first one is, I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding employment negotiations clearly places the board at a substantial disadvantage because the board risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses the employment contract in public.
I'll second that.
And remember, we learned a couple, on the 31st, right? I think, when was it? Or was it the week before? Yeah. That we weren't following, going into executive session correctly. So, that was the first motion. Okay. So, any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of what Steve wrote? Can you repeat that, Steve?
Do you find that the premature general public knowledge regarding employment contract negotiations clearly places the board at a substantial disadvantage because the board risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses employment contracts in public?
And why couldn't I repeat that? Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, then the next?
So, I'd like to make another motion. I move that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiated contracts as per, under Title I, Section 313A1.
Okay, a second. Okay, Suzanne, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of moving into executive session per Title I, VSA 313A1, for the purpose of discussing negotiated side letters, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, will. Okay, so we'll give you a few minutes, Kurt. Folks can take a break and then we'll resume.